That you don't get your arm in though.
Yeah.
No, for I don't really care, but you may be like, oh, it's my arm again.
Yeah, it's like.
Yeah, right. Do you want an agenda?
I already got one.
You got one?
Is it warm enough for you out there?
Uh, it's not that bad. It's gonna get bad this afternoon, though.
Oh, man. Why is that?
It's gonna be ninety degrees. And there's an excessive heat advisory for Kenton until tomorrow.
Still hot.
Yeah.
Still hot. Tried to walk out the yard a couple times yesterday, but yeah.
Yeah, there were times where I just worked from home because like building doesn't have good air conditioning right now, so. It's nice to have a new window, though, because like just throw it up and let my ceiling fan run and I'm all good.
Well, just the bright side is tomorrow's first day of summer.
It's already feeling like it's not.
Tomorrow.
In Ohio, summer starts in May. That's just.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Think every now and then we'll get like snow in March or April. Just a little bit of snow.
Yeah. It's snow in April. Doesn't last long.
Yeah.
You come to the hearing tonight, you're probably gonna cover it.
Hearing, uh, what for?
The, um, auditor's budget approval.
Auditor's budget approval.
It's a well, it's not a budget, it's a, uh, I think it's a formula that they that they use for the property tax. It's a six. But it's not on yours, it's probably.
It's probably on Tim's docket, I think. I'm not sure. I'll have to ask him about that.
Yeah. Yeah.
So at six P M?
Yeah, it's just. Cause they have the formula that they do for the townships and for the cities and they have to approve it every five years. So I don't know if it's gonna be really exciting, but.
Five year plan?
Well, it's a five year approval for the formula. So they give like fifty percent to accounting, you know, and then a percent percentage each township. And then a percentage to the town on Zoom. So. Just a interesting. It's more of a kind of a state, I think.
Mm-hmm.
How do you understand? I don't know.
I don't know.
I've been trying to figure it out, but I don't know, the account. If it works.
Well, I'll ask Tim and see what he thinks.
Yeah, I'm sure. I'm sure he'll agree. So you have the so they have all the towns.
Mm-hmm.
And, um, the percentage of what they get. And then the townships. So.
I'm ready, Deb.
Okay.
I'm ready.
Petake issues for June twentieth twenty twenty four, motion for following minutes, June eighteenth twenty twenty four, volume one twelve, page twenty one.
So move.
Second.
Roger.
Yes.
Tim.
Yes.
Fred.
Yes.
Volume one twelve, page twenty two bills.
Move to pay.
Second.
Fred.
Yes.
Tim.
Yes.
Roger.
Yes.
Fred, that's all I have.
Uh, we need to move to correct the.
Oh.
One.
What was that? Volume one twelve? No.
Volume seven, but I don't remember the page.
Seven, page fifty two.
It's in the box. Yep.
Correction.
So I will so move.
Second.
Tim, move second. Roger.
Yes.
Fred.
Yes.
Tim.
Yes.
Can you state what the correction was?
We're moving all the name off of A payout.
Hmm.
Did you do alright on the first steward thing?
Mm-hmm.
How'd that go?
Um.
Cause it's just kind of a huge thing to do this now.
Yeah.
Kind of different, I didn't see that very well. I shouldn't. Sure, I've got.
Yeah, I I only put in the, uh, the part with the wesler engineering because that was like the most productive part of the meeting. The other stuff, it was like either tabled or they spent like thirty five minutes arguing over it, so it was like, yeah. It just put out the wesler engineering part and.
Yeah, that's.
Or hiring, cause they didn't hire new police officers, so.
Oh, yeah.
Yep. And he was from Kenton, so might as well put her in there, so. But, yeah. That meeting went on longer than it should.
Yes, it did.
Yeah. I think the shortest meeting I've been to is probably. I can't think of a short meeting. Um.
Kind of defeats the purpose.
Ridgeway.
Oh, yeah.
Ridgeway was pretty short.
Uh, we're good? We're good.
Yeah, and then they moved to executive session and they're like, you need to go, and I'm like, oh, good.
Right.
So.
That's it, yeah.
Wow, cause Ridgeway is also trying to handle some kind of water disposal, uh, that they're gonna colder install.
Yeah, Mark Paul.
Yeah, in the field, like near the ba- baseball or football field, I don't know, but basically will drain the water, especially in the fall time of rain, it's like.
Yeah.
Uh, ch-ch-ch. They're trying to get a post office.
That's not a post office?
They don't.
But they used to.
Well, they used to. They don't have a mail delivery system anymore. They had to go, they pretty much residents have to drive them out, they're driven to get their mail as well. Yeah, which is.
Was a post office used to be, right? Well, that's not true.
They used to have a post office like right there at Ridgeway, but then it was just.
Right.
Yeah.
So they're trying to bring it up?
Yeah. They just have to go through some stuff first before that could happen, so.
It's kind of a deal.
Yeah.
I don't wanna have to try to get that mail.
Yeah. Especially when like, say you order something online and it has to be mailed to your address, if it don't have a mailing system, then.
Yeah, you'd have to do like FedEx or something.
Yeah, you'd have to do FedEx or something like that, but Amazon usually delivers it themselves, cause they have ideas or trucks, but like.
We get a ton of, um, post office.
Mm-hmm, but if you get stuff from the post office, you gotta have a post office.
Do they have the boxes?
I don't know. I think they do, cause it's required you have one.
That's crazy. I need that one out.
Mm-hmm.
Do you know what they mean?
Ridgeway?
Yeah.
Um.
I think I was looking at, um, Alger. I couldn't find. I can find the Alger one. I don't know if any of them.
Uh, they have it on their Facebook page, but it's a private group. You have to request access to get in there.
Oh, the Village.
Village of Alger and those who care about it. That's where the post meeting is. Yeah.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay.
Uh, ch-ch-ch, it's.
The entire. I think it's okay. I can look it up, I just.
There are nice ones, July. They wanted me to have it in the paper, so. I think it's July seventeenth. Yeah, it's gotta be. Hang on, let me look at my calendar. July sixteenth. They usually have their meetings third Tuesday of the month.
When we get the bids in for the cooler up at Simon Canton and for the roof.
Yeah.
We're gonna have to.
For each venue.
Yeah, we're gonna have to, um, do an additional appropriation capital improvement.
True capital.
Yeah. We've got five hundred and eighty five thousand here and a.
From capital.
Yeah.
Okay, okay. Guess we're looking at having as hard of a, you know, A R P.
The roof? And the roof without.
Or Simon.
Oh, the tiller? Yeah.
That's what I'm saying.
If we have that much, wow, and roof.
Tiller and.
What's that?
Chiller and the roof.
Yeah, those two projects. If the tiller comes out, I think we're still gonna have to do additional appropriations to, uh, permanent improvement. Yeah, those two projects. If the tiller comes out, I think we're still gonna have to do additional appropriation to permanent improvement. Hmm.
Good morning.
Morning, Sharon.
Morning, Sharon. How's everybody in here?
Good, good. Cooler than outside.
Yes, it is. Wait till this afternoon or evening.
Yeah, it's very good.
Been been this way for the past week, hasn't it?
It's just a day that I had a lot of people wish they had their own little waiting pool, public pool, something later. Okay. Yeah. Do you have things you wanna start first, or do you?
Well, I understand that you have a uh employee disciplinary.
Yes, I do.
Position. I'm gonna entertain a motion to go into a closed session for the consideration of employee motion dismissal, compensation and discipline. One twenty-one point two-two G one.
So who?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Roger.
Yes.
Two.
Yeah.
All right.
Yes.
Yes.
Michelle, take your camera with you, please. Okay, we're back to open session and uh no disciplinary action required.
Okay.
So, what do you have for Sharon? Thank you.
Um, I had a family, well, it's a a group of family members dropped this off yesterday. They have the proof in there showing that when their parents many, many years ago were residents of Harden Hills, when they died, the family purchased the grandfather clock that's in the lobby and it's got on it a plaque saying, you know, for, you know, this and this family. They are requesting that they would like that grandfather clock back um since they have the proof that they, you know, they're the ones who gave it after their death. And the plaque is still there. I checked it. It clearly says.
Because the plaque was the plaque roughly said.
It says donated by the family of, for memory of, and listed the husband and wife that lived there.
We'll uh we'll run that by the prosecutor, but I don't see that would be a problem.
Okay. Okay. All right. Uh next thing, our revenue then for the month of May was two hundred and forty-one thousand and we averaged a census of fifteen. Our expenses were five hundred and three thousand, four hundred and seventy-five dollars. And that is including the first vacation payout from an employee who had resigned um and taken retirement, I should say, not resigned, she took her from um her permanent retirement. There has been no Medicaid recoupment of that four hundred and forty-two thousand dollars yet. The State of Ohio Department of Medicaid still has not figured out how they're going to do this and the accuracy
Of.
of each nursing home and this large amount of money.
So to make it clear, not only the Harden Hills, but their.
The whole state.
It's a state total. Nothing has been done.
Right. One building got one point five million
Wow.
in an overpayment because they were two hundred and fifty beds. So that's how messed up this glitch is through Ohio Department of Medicaid. So it's many, many nursing homes and we may not see this until who knows when. They just can't figure it out yet. I am approximating our ending balance to be about nine hundred thousand. And that's just roughly because again, we don't know the Medicaid.
Yep.
Um, of course, that will not last long, you know, as we windle down lack of payments and when they stop payments.
But as we stand right now with the four hundred.
Mm-hmm. Nine hundred thousand is approximately what we will have to work with paying out vacation payout to employees and sick time and all the closure expenses. We have received our first federal, what's called a RAP audit, um which um stands for recovery audit, meaning taking money back. Um they've asked on one resident for a year and a half of every piece of documentation. So they will look at all of the therapy services and of course, that company is obligated by contract to continue helping us with audits for no matter how many years that may go on. So we have that secured. Um, we should receive by the beginning of next week our actual certificate that I can then hang on the wall for licensure. Um, that it'll be like a framed, very important document. I won't wanna lose. Um, I currently have twenty-one employees left. I have, let's see, within an hour, I will have two residents left and that is it. Um, so staff will continue to be dwindled down through all departments um because we certainly don't need them just to take care of D E S events. Let's see, that is, I think, everything I have got. That is pertinent. Any questions?
I don't think so.
All right. Anything you need to look into for you, or?
No.
Okay.
Uh, I will entertain a motion that uh we put out for bid. The sale of licensed nursing home beds at Harden Hills. Uh, we advertise this as public bid and that it be advertised on the twenty-fifth of June, second of July, ninth of July, and the seventeenth, sixteenth of July.
Sixteenth.
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 Bids due on July twenty-third to be opened that month.
So why so who?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Tim?
Yes.
Roger?
Yes.
Fred?
Yes.
Thank you.
And we will use the documents provided by our law uh to do the bidding process. Okay?
You okay?
I do. That's all we can.
I'm all done then.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sharon.
Have a great day, everybody.
Yep.
Yep.
Stay cool.
Glad you're surviving all of the unnecessary visits that you're getting.
Uh, yes.
Thank you.
Yes. We're on a first-name basis.
Oh, thank you, Sharon.
You're very welcome. Thank you, Sharon.
So I just have a question of clarification. Uh, this motion was to approve bidding for the licensure of the beds?
For the sale of the licensed beds.
For the sale of the license to the beds. Alrighty.
Yep.
And it is to be advertised on June twenty-fifth, you said?
Yeah, it'll be starting next Tuesday and and then uh for four consecutive Tuesdays.
Alrighty. Thank you.
Yep.
Just had to make sure my numbers were correct.
Yep. And the times will be getting the the documents here shortly so that they can get it in the papers, so. Do you have any other questions you can reference?
Bidders can request a bid package.
It's probably a little bit. It's supposed to rise up there.
Also.
Why should it get up?
How's my friend? How you guys doing?
Good.
Hi, Rob. Okay.
Oh.
No, that's Tuesday.
That's a whole lot.
Yeah, Tuesday. We got all about that Tuesday night.
I don't remember here.
It's a bit on, but we're still about that, so. Probably a bit uh.
I'm sorry. I'm not there.
And probably one being all you that might regularly see something like this a pretty often, so it's just.
It's been.
So it's kind of six, but it's good. Uh, it's a little difficult to distinguish between the other thing we have six, you know, the.
Yeah.
Sorry, like, so, so that you would.
Yeah.
She wants you to look around, but in the front of the office, can you just switch your work around a little bit? Yeah. Okay. Yeah, it was like you.
Sheryl was out there. Brad. I'd say probably you and Jake move right up here to the cushioned blue chairs.
Cool, come to your seat.
Yeah, there you go.
Isn't that amazing?
Ah, well, yeah, sort of.
Get the cushy chairs.
Try to try to give uh reverence to President and Vice President.
We don't get that much.
Tim should be right back in. All the way, Tim, just, I don't know whether anybody did any introductions for you or not. Um, gentleman in the coat of ties in out uh color from the Times.
Okay.
And uh we have Michelle Lavas, who is also recording this, so it could appear on YouTube or online somewhere.
It is probably.
So you were all aware.
Yeah.
Jimmy, off off topic, did you get the check for uh the helps for the fair bid?
Yes.
I tried to make sense of that online system. Every time it wants me to log in and I don't remember my login and.
You're not the only one. Well, yes.
Well, if you keep people in the room. Okay, I think, no, no, lost Deb again.
No, I'm here.
Okay. Um, I think in the effort to keep everybody on schedule, we'll go ahead and get straight up Tim's back in the room now, so.
Sorry.
The floor is yours.
Uh, so just, uh, so just as a matter of introductions, um, I'll go ahead and we start. Mine's Brad Murphy, um, I'm currently a, uh, a director on the, uh, of Hardin County Athletic Football Society and, uh, and currently serving as president of the Fair Board. I am here, um, on, during my normal work hours, I have an A P shirt on, but for the record, I'm not here representing A P. I'm here representing the fair to, for everyone to know. Uh, I, uh, this is my third year serving as, as president, uh, prior to that, I served as vice president for three years. Um, and been on board since two thousand and sixteen. Um, I have the Dubby Township, so.
Um, Jake McFadden, I'm currently the vice president, um, going for about five or so years, maybe six years, I think. Um, I'm an at-large member and. I guess I'm confused yourselves, I'm not sure. So.
Well, yeah, we're also joined by Tronacola and Rob Wilson, as well as Judy Crawley, who is our first, our fair secretary and treasurer. Um, so, um, are we, are we here to talk about what Jake has, or are we here to talk about, um, some topics that you guys wanted to talk about?
Well, let's start with what Jake wants to talk about and we'll move on.
Okay, sounds perfect.
So, the one, I, I kind of mentioned to you before, Roger, and we've talked in the past over years, and you, um, finally kind of wanted to formally bring it to the commissioners and see, get your thoughts on it, I guess. Um, so we've asked for community feedback in the past, um, in the form of, um, online survey polls, things like that. And one of the things that always was reoccurring was, um, selling alcohol, like the track or pools, the concerts, so things like that, that the grandstands. Um, one of the two, the grandstands, I don't think. Um, it's become commonplace, um, in functions around the state, you know, golf outings, supporting schools and different, um, nonprofits and other organizations. Um, athletic, um, fundraiser, things like that, eats on the streets down here in Ken, in downtown, um, and also the majority of fairs, uh, throughout the state are currently serving to some capacity. Whether it be full grounds, one event, just grandstands, a garden, whatever it is, serving alcohol. Um, so I guess what we would like to talk about, um, for this topic is the sale of alcohol for just the concert for this year. Just as a, as a matter of boosting profits to help pay for entertainment acts that we bring to the county, help pay for, you know, our ongoing projects with the buildings and, and other things, that we have improvement, upkeep and stuff like that. Basically just want to see if, what you guys think of, of having that, I've got some different information as far as like planning that we've kind of got set in place, um, already, that we're already kind of planning for. Um, if we do have the okay, but we just kind of want to get the, the nod that it's okay to continue on investigating this and, you know, not looking to hand out the fine details of it today, but just get kind of the nod to, if that's okay. What do you think, I guess?
I was just gonna say, this is just an exploratory conversation, uh, there's a lot of details that would have to be ironed out. Uh, there's, there's a lot of, um, a lot of procedural things that have to be ironed out too, as you all know, we have a lease with the commissioners, um, on the fair ground, I think it's a ninety-nine year lease. Um, the sale, sale of alcohol, I believe is currently prohibited, um, in said agreement, um, in said lease agreement. And so, uh, this is just the first step to feel you out and get your thoughts and feedback and input into the idea of doing this. Um, we, it's kind of been a chicken or the egg conversation for the last couple of years. Um, we attend, uh, the Ohio Fair Managers Association, even every year, where we get to interact with our peers, talk to them about things that they've done, new things that they've tried and failed at. Um, learning from their mistakes, learning from their, uh, successes, and this is one of the areas, um, that we've consistently run across. We will go to other fairs and visit, um, to see, to talk with them, to collaborate on how they do their, how they run their fair. Um, not all communities are created equal, right? And so, we're different than the lake over in Mercer County, and we're different than, you know, uh, Upper, um, and, and Windup County. So, um, really, this decision is, is, is an organic decision within the community. Um, and we have different people, right, with different, um, memories and history of the fair, and so we don't want to jeopardize that. But we also, um, we also have worked very hard to become what I would consider financially solvent, which means that we are being fiscally, uh, responsible, but we're also looking for opportunities to generate revenue. Um, um, it's, it's, uh, one, our model of how we run our fair is once our visitors enter our gate and they pay their gate admission. Um, unless they attend one of our special ticketed, uh, events, we don't make another dollar off them at our fair. Uh, almost all of our revenue comes from, uh, rented indoor and outdoor booth space, sponsorships and gate tickets. Uh, we don't take commission on our food vendors, um, and so really, um, we're always looking for ways to optimize our revenue generation so that we can fund, you know, um, better events, bigger events for the fair. Um, I, I believe our fair is one of the, if not the premier events of our county. It brings people from all lifestyles, um, from all corners of the county, the kids, we're there for the youth, uh, but we're also there to make sure that we continue to grow and to develop and to mature. Uh, so I think Jake is bringing this to you just to have a conversation about if this is an option for us, uh, because there are some, some things that have to happen in order for us to actually execute on this.
Well, it's obviously, in order to get your temporary permit, you have to have fencing and so it'll all be well contained. I assume there would be security involved with, uh, having extra deputies?
Yeah, so I've talked to, yeah, I've talked to a few fairs about, um, there's a, it's a, it's a small fee for an increased insurance amount, um, the licensing fees. Um, you have to have signage at your gates, you know, to say, at your, around your fencing, to say, you know, no alcohol beyond this point, um, things like that. Um, we're, we're talking about just doing in front of the grandstand area that's, you know, all fenced off for that entertainment act, um, alone, not for the whole round, so.
Sort of give a sign, just ring a stand there.
Yes, yeah, and so they can help fence the area there, um.
And for about one minute.
Yeah, for, for this year, I think we would just target the, the concert of twenty twenty-four and it's just as kind of a, you know, see how it goes and different toes in. If it's a hit, then maybe next year we talk about expanding, or we just keep it at, you know, one, one event or a concert or whatever it is, but. Um, some other stuff is, yeah, snow fence or roping off the, the serving area and the, the drinking area. Um, serving, you have to have a safety serve class, we've coordinated with the O S U extension office to, to get the old servers out. I know, I think Hardin County professionals have done, but the eats on the streets in the past, and they've had volunteers in the past, so that's an option. Um, and then, uh, we've already talked to Sheriff Everhart, um, he's on board, um, he got us some prices on, you know, if we needed extra deputies outside of what he has on staff, um, he got us the rate for that. We'll just have to work out the numbers and stuff, because we want increased deputies anyways, just because it's the concert. So, it might not be a huge add-on cost, but there might be one or two extras there for this reason, but. And then, of course, the procedures, the, the fine details of how you serve it, limits, you know, tickets or just go straight out and buy it and all that kind of stuff. We're, we still have some, I have some ideas over from other fairs, but no need for that yet, so.
Do you have any working estimates at, uh, as far as the attendance to this concert?
So, right now, I think we're right around a thousand sold. Um, we've got another big push coming, um, here in August that we, you know, as far as like, uh, radio ads and stuff like that. And then, but it seems like in the past, a lot of our ticket sales don't come until the fair, because it's always that, you know, it's out there within you, it's always, it's even a rain, it's, and I don't want to spend the money until I know the weather's nice. So, so that's kind of always our big sell, is that be the fair, or at least in the before when people start to see the forecast.
So, but do you have a minor certain target number?
Yeah, I mean, we would really like to get to that two thousand, I think would be our, our big number, right, was, that we had talked about was, was around two thousand would be great. Even a thousand, that's pretty good for what we've seen in the past, it's a good start for being that early in pre-sale.
This early, yeah.
Absolutely.
We've had good response from this year's, um, um, concert announcement on, on early ticket sales, and to Jake's point, we typically see a pretty big swing up, upswing, um, in, in, uh. You want folks to know that, that we're gonna have, have hopefully good weather. Um, we've had a couple of, one concert was rained out, obviously, and so we prepare for that. Um, but, um, I would say, um, sell out would probably be wonderful, it would be wonderful, yeah.
Is the area where alcohol would be served off limits to minors?
So, what, from what I've gotten from, so I've attended the, um, I think it's the Wilson Football Festival, they do an Ada, they serve there, and then, um, uh, here as well in downtown for Eats on the Streets and some other fairs that I've attended. The process they kind of use that I personally kind of like was, you have one table where you come up and you have someone check your ID, whether it's scanning it or verifying age that way, and you get a wrist, a special wristband, not just a random orange wristband, you know, something that's specialized, that says you're twenty-one or whatever. And then you can purchase tickets, and then that goes, and you have to have your wristband and your tickets then to go to another table, another area, and it kind of helps keep the congestion down if you're trying to make change and get your, get your drinks in, in, in orderly fashion. Um, but yeah, I think just to, to keep mine or not, it's just, you know, you advertise a twenty-one over, obviously, and then we've got technology that we can actually scan the IDs, it'll visually tell us, and you don't, you don't have to rely on someone reading the date right on ID or something like that, you can just scan the barcode on the back, and it will pop up and say, yes, the February twenty-one or not.
And, and there are, and, uh, and from what we look, there are opportunities to, um, to barrier off that, that initial, it's almost like a, like a two gated system. Where the first gate will be the identification, the age verification, and then that gets you into like the next level, you know, which is where the actual serving, and so you verify your age, you get a ticket, and then you go into like the serving space. And that's where you go, so you, you ingress, egress through the same point, and that way you can have a, a, a single, a single gateway to monitor the, you know, incoming, upcoming traffic. You're most looking at people coming in, uh, but you can also, you look at them going out.
And we would probably more than like staff a, a deputy at that serving ID table just to handle any kind of, if situations with underage or anyone getting, having any issues. And from what I've talked to, to Sheriff Everhart and other fairs, they've seen little, little issue with people getting disorderly or anything like that. I've heard very, very few issues at concerts and tractor pulls and things like that at those fairs, from, from the four or five different fairgrounds that I've talked to personally.
Do you have any idea how many fairs allow alcohol, or how many do?
Unfortunately, there's not a, a good list that lists them out, um, but I, I mean, there's a vast majority, I would say, close to half probably, maybe, pretty, pretty close to half that have alcohol at it, some capacity. There's some, like, in Green County has it, their whole fairgrounds is fenced off, so theirs is like all the whole background. Some do it and just, you know, have beer gardens, just not even for an event, just a garden, and some have a, just a grandstand, like, kind of what we want to do. Um, so it just kind of varies, but I, I would say, there's no official list, but I would say it's pretty close to half that have it at some capacity.
Locally around the team, think there may be that are local around here, maybe continuous to Hardin County?
Allez County. Yeah, Allez, Richwood, um, Independent, um. Union County, I believe, has some for their concerts, Logan and.
Allen.
Yeah, Logan, Allen, Bill.
Mercer's kind of far away.
Yeah, Mercer's far away, they have it, I'm not sure that Windup County does, I can't remember, but. But I know, but the vast majority, the, the touch Hardin County do as well.
Okay. Well, I think we, we all know that there's alcohol already being consumed out there, especially when you get the infield. And then the pit areas, if people find a way to get it in. You know, I, I, like I told you, I'm kind of torn whether, you know, we want to sell off a beer there, but it's already there, and if the fair board can capitalize on that. I guess I'm not opposed to that, especially in a very restricted setting like it is, as a trial to see how it goes.
And so, in the past two years, probably three years, we've had a, a very, um, put, very hard push for the pits area, especially like tractor pool and demo, like demo derby is always our biggest one. And so now we check, a deputy goes around and checks every single car as they pull into the infield. And checks cool, and if they have cooler, we open it and look at it, and, and that's helped a lot, and we've taken barrels of, and I think that's something we'll continue to do, especially if we're, you know, serving at track profit. That's something that we need to continue to police and enforce that, that rule, and so we've done a hard push on that for last few years, so.
That was a point I was going to make. Well, again, while it's something that would be new to Hardin County, while at least it's not new to surrounding towns around here, it's been somewhat tested. Yeah, I, I would agree, I think, with Commissioner Crowe that, you know, to test it, see what happens, see, you know, make sure it's contained, I, I don't have an issue with that, you know. Tim, any thoughts?
I'm kind of on the fence, just, are we real careful minors and mixing of that somehow, there's, if you got an adequate way to check that. But, uh, I can agree with a trial this year for grandstand, that area, and see how it goes.
And I think that, and thank you commissioners for your input, we have a vested interest in making sure that this is done properly. We, we want this to be successful, we want this to serve the objective, which is to increase revenue, uh, to draw in attendance to some of these events. Um, but we also want to make sure that we, um, manage appropriately and ma, and ensure that we don't have a situation where it gets, it gets out of control. And that, and that's super important for us.
That, if it's something that you control and you do it right time. I don't know, I. I've, uh, if, if you guys plan to move forward as far as the ninety-nine year lease, um, we'll probably need to check with the prosecutor to be sure, but, uh, I think we can probably do a, an addendum, temporary addendum that would waive that section for this year. And then if it's successful, and we want to look at, like, permanently modifying the agreement.
Yeah, I, 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 wha, what came to mind, Commissioner Crowe, was, uh, a, a limited addendum for a finite period of time that you would retain the right to revoke that addendum or to terminate it. Um, uh, if conditions warrant, right? And that, honestly, that kind of holds our feet in the fire to make sure that we put every ounce of energy into doing it right and to make it successful, uh, but you, you, uh, you hold a, you hold the strings on that.
And I have confidence that you guys are gonna do it right.
We try very hard. Okay, so I think for next steps, I think we, we have to take that back to our board, um, we've talked a lot about this with the board informally, but I think now that we have at least your input and positions on this, we can have a more meaningful conversation with them. Uh, in the interim, if, if we, if our next board meeting is. Uh in the interim, if if we, if our next board meeting is July ninth?
Ten.
Tenth, so it's the it's off off Wednesday scheduled because of the Fourth of July holidays. Um so we'll bring that, this conversation to our board on July tenth, um and have a dialogue. Uh in the interim, um it would be uh helpful to understand what the timing. Kind of day one to day done of what an amendment might look like for a prosecutor's office. Um and so maybe we can contact you the week before that that board meeting and just say, hey, do we have an idea? Um if it's a sixty day process, right, to make that, you know, amendment, we're we're really up against it. Um but if it's a if it's a thirty day, then it's something different, so if you can just feel out what that timetable is.
Yeah, we'll try to try to find that out as soon as we can, you know.
Yeah, okay. Anything else you wanted to bring up on that topic?
I think on that topic, I think we're okay, you know, so if you guys have any other questions or any concerns, please reach out or get ahold of us or we can come back and talk and.
Thank you all for your consideration, we appreciate it.
Yep, anything else that you wanted to discuss today or?
I, not unless you, not unless you have topics that you wanted to cover with us specifically.
No, I know you're working on that building project, but when you're ready to to present all that.
Get that right, put that on your shoulders. I I will, I I I will tell you that our next scheduled meeting on that topic is on July second. Um where the the committee is meeting again, um some of our um funding sources are becoming more clear to us. Um some are still a little unclear, um but um.
Have you talked to Colt this week?
I I have, I have, um and um I, like I said to the team, our commitment remains steadfast and we will meet our objectives. Um what the timetable looks like, we're hoping to map out on July second. Um I have been not intentionally um delaying a meeting with the commissioners to bring our strategic plan to you, which I don't think we've ever done formally. Um but I'd like to get that plan updated with some of the schedule on the building and come back and get an audience with commissioners again. And share that stric- that stric- that strategic plan with you so that you have a full understanding and awareness of what we're doing, what we plan to do, and what it's gonna take to get us. To where we can meet our goals, so I hope that makes sense, we maintain a strategic plan since two thousand and nineteen, eighteen, nineteen? Um and this building has always been in the uh what we call the big hairy gold section. Uh and now we're just, you're starting to get a little bit of clarity uh around that, so it's it's a good time to come, and before you've had conversations. So I was highly disappointed, my hair didn't. Out of Columbus, so. A- as as were we, um but for us, it's gravity, we don't really have any control over it, so we just have to have to adjust to it, so.
Yeah, that's right, that's right.
Okay. Well, thanks for coming in, thank you all for.
I have one other thing.
Oh, yep.
Uh I need to ask about the Hour of Inspiration, if you guys are willing to participate again and get maybe with us on who will be there and let us know later.
I know, I know I'll be there, you can be there on Sunday of the fair for Hour of Inspiration, Fred.
Hi, Peter.
Oh, great, be there again.
And then uh, one hour of you speak, don't you read something normally?
Somebody does, I think it's scripture or something, but I wouldn't, you know.
Yeah, I'm gonna reply from here for that.
Yeah, yeah.
Tell me what you want to do.
Yeah, I'll just let you know.
Colt told me what to do, and I can pass that over. Only the the one or two. Okay.
Okay.
Thank you all for.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks.
Is Rick Hoffman calling in to us?
Um I need to verify, cause I actually think he's at ten thirty, I believe at eleven, I think this agenda is incorrect, I think the joint audible board is the phone call at eleven. For the audible.
Oh, okay. Yep. It usually is a phone call, so.
Uh at the Zoom, I'm sorry, I think it's a.
Yeah, I figured you were putting it up there, we didn't have a link on our agenda.
From the Ohio Air Quality Development Authority has an issue that has a purely manual report due to the paper. Um what happens there is 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 a bit different than what you're used to with the uh with the normal exemption and um and then the stop the solar pilot program. Um you know, with the grant, you issue them an exemption, um the the dirt exam, and then you get a pilot payment of up to, well, you get seven thousand. If you if you go for the uh other payment, two thousand. Um so that's what you're used to, you know, you produce ninety thousand dollars of pilot payment for megawatt.
Right.
Well, when you get the AQDA bond issued, that's a whole different beast, because we have a different statute, which is thirty-seven oh six point oh four one. Which the the director will issue Mike a certificate that basically says the project is exempt. And 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 Mike, did you print out a copy of what I sent you uh that Madison County has?
Well, I gave him an email, they should get it on their computers, Rick, I don't know if you can hear me, so.
He can move up.
Okay, I'm gonna break it, yes.
So yeah, so you if you look at what Madison County had, you know, you've got the certi- you've got the letter, which went to, which went to the Madison County Auditor. And it includes a Schedule A and a Schedule, well, a certificate and then Schedule B. Schedule A is what the auditor's most uh concerned with, because that's the listing of what consists. Uh the equipment that consists of the project. So in in the Madison field case, all of that racking equipment, trackers, piles, grounding, solar panels. Wiring harnesses, cable management, electrical converters, inverters, I mean substations, all of that equipment. Which would be P U T P or Public Utility Personal Property, and then appear on the tax list, and taxable is not gonna be on tax list and exempted. So the the next question is, if that's all exempted, do they need to sign any pilot agreements with the county commissioners? And I would argue no, because it's already exempt.
So that's a way to get around being violent.
Y- you betcha, you betcha, um with uh, we, I have a friend of mine, she um she works as a lobbyist for the uh. For the uh utility side uh uh energy folks. And she's been telling me for years that those folks are getting closer and closer and closer to the break even point. On whether or not they actually need to sign the agreements with the county commissioners, because they they're almost at that break even point. Um and it's little things like this, you know, you with improvement in efficiency of the panels themselves, they're now going to what's called bifacial. Solar panels where not only do you capture the direct sunlight, but as the light beams bounce off the ground. There's one or two percent more efficiency that you squeeze out of these panels. And the more you do that, the the less acreage you need per megawatt. Which means, I mean, think about this, I mean, what, do you know what your farmers are getting leases for up there, is it like nine hundred thousand bucks an acre?
Uh they're pretty tight lipped about all of that.
No, okay, but let's let's just use a thousand dollars per acre. So what's saying, the old standard was eight acres per megawatt. I'm now doing six, so suddenly there's two thousand dollars per megawatt I no longer pay out to my landlord. So you you know, you get you get, well, and then don't forget the subsidies from the Fed, but. You add all that up together and suddenly we don't need commissioners exemption agreement. Then you add to the mix, we're now doing the bond, which as long as the bonds are outstanding, the exemption applies. So um in that, those bonds go till twenty fifty-seven. So so we uh, we we got another thirty plus years of exempt tax for that hundred eighty megawatts.
So is it still our option whether we will sign off on this uh AQDA TE or?
Oh, no, you're not involved.
We're not involved?
No, now it's now, as far as air quality development authority goes. For the for the power signing board, they're still gonna get input from the local government, they're still gonna go, I mean, that that hasn't changed. So the signing board project is suspended, it's just the finding concern.
So we'll have farm ground coming off of our taxes, we're no longer gonna collect real estate tax and.
Well, the dirt, the dirt you should, the 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 dirt you will, but but then again, let's just go with, um yeah, let's just do a quick calculation. Hey, Mike, what uh, do you have a rough number for your land table for large acreage squirrel?
For valuation or?
Yeah, mar- and again, market value.
For market, you said?
Yeah.
Okay, we're probably seventy-five hundred to eight thousand, probably.
Okay, yeah, cause ma- uh Madison is a big throw, yeah, let's just use eight.
Yeah.
So, you know, eight thousand dollars times six acres is forty-eight thousand times thirty-five percent assessment rate. Gives you sixteen eighth taxable times, uh what what's a good mileage rate, uh fifty-three mil effective?
Uh we're probably just right around forty, probably a little bit below, use forty.
Oh, oh, use, oh, holy cow, so you use forty?
Yeah, probably for, cause we hit the, I must have supposed to hit the twenty no four, so.
Okay.
We're probably thirty-five to forty is probably our range.
Okay, so it's a five to five thousand. So basically, they will be paying about, let's just round it up, seven hundred dollars in tax per megawatt. Which is a lot better than the nine thousand they were gonna pay.
Yeah.
So, I mean, we're, so I mean, I guess, if you wanna, I mean, this is not much of a silver lining. But we will, they would be paying on market value of the dirt, not C A V value of the dirt.
Rick, can I change the market values to commercial rate then or not?
Oh, I would, yeah, cause it's no longer an agriculture deal, so does that mean it's up to fifteen pounds of maybe?
Um I think we're at twelve five.
Okay, so we're still talking eleven, twelve hundred dollars.
Yeah.
I mean, still better than nine thousand for the pilot payment.
Yeah.
So yeah, so I mean, it makes total sense why they're doing it, I mean, if if the state of Ohio is gonna be issuing the bond for them, I would I would do it too.
Then once the bonds are done, what do they pay?
Well, do you think about this, um what is what is a thirty year old solar field worth?
Yeah, it's fully depreciated by then.
And you've got that thirty years of depreciation, and again, um I'm sure there will be some maintenance, there will be some replacement of like transformer equipment. But still, I mean, a a thirty year old um piece of public utility personal property is not the same as a brand new piece of. Public utility personal property. So, I mean, what, forty percent, thirty percent at best?
Well, you're just full of good news today.
Well, I wish, I wish I, I wish I had a better news story.
When when did the uh state pass all of this?
Oh, um well, actually, the air quality development authority's been around for a while, um using them for the for the solar field is kind of a new thing. Um there was another county, I think there is one more county out there that has a project, but. But I think the biggest one so far is that hundred eighty megawatt in uh in Madison.
There's like five of them.
Oh, what, did you say New York?
Yeah.
Yes, you know, I I think that is another one that's on the, it's it's in the, it's in product, or not production, it's in the pipeline.
Yeah, there's, I'll five of them qualified right now, they couldn't.
Yeah, well, I was on the phone call with Todd and the gang, we were we we were talking about the possibility, we hadn't run an operation.
Okay. Well, that gives us something to uh think about for sure, and uh it certainly changes my opinion on sending a letter of uh either recommendation or. No objection to the state in support of their program.
Yeah, the, you know, there's there's such, there's such a push, there's such a push to get the renewal on. And 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 again, depending on which transmission line you're talking about, I mean. The, I I'm sure you guys know about the, you know, the Brown County boom, the Clinton County boom, Bay FC, you've seen it. You know, the problem is, when when that Adams County old facility shut down, I mean, suddenly you had seventy percent capacity on that transmission line. And and that company that runs it was making deals to to, I mean, like, hey, we have a free interconnect.
Yeah.
Or buy buy one interconnect, get one free, just put the pilot on the line.
Yeah. Okay, any other question, Fred?
No, I, so I guess at this point, we still have a choice of doing either way.
No.
No.
They make that decision.
Yeah, they'll make that decision, the old, in fact, what happened in the, what happened in Madison was uh. Jennifer, the auditor, walked in the works one day and entered entered in the in the inbox or her email was the certification from uh air quality development.
So the the local governments don't even get notified when they're going to have their hearing and make the decision?
Well, they, so what what was happening is, the the school treasurer, you know, we've been doing a lot of work. Uh with the with the school treasurer, trying to figure out how much they would be getting from the seven thousand dollars. Uh of the pilot payment that was gonna be distributed based on physical location. And so, you know, Jennifer Jennifer just thought it was gonna be an email from the treasurer, and it ended up being email from air quality. And she she got that word that you saw there. And uh so so that was an emergency phone call back to the school treasurer, telling the telling the school treasurer this is not worth zero.
Wow. Yeah, that is not going to sit well with residents when they find out about this.
Oh, I know, I know, um. Oh, I know, I know, um, gonna say, the only thing you need to do is call, call your state rep, your state senator, and ask them about the wisdom of that, of using the, those bonds for these projects.
Okay. Well, Mike, any other questions?
No, Rick, you'll be available if there's any further questions later on?
Oh, yeah, 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 if commissioners hear other questions, just filter them through Mike, um, uh, oh, now, the, the only last piece is the recoupment would still apply.
Right.
Be- because the definition of, the definition of energy facility has not changed, so if the entire farm is consumed by the solar channel, then that leaves no additional qualifying C A V than the recoupment does get in.
But that's a penalty on the landowner, not on the solar developers?
Well, hopefully, the landowner has a lawyer who, who put the correct paragraph in that contract.
Yeah. And those, those are things we haven't seen either as a contract.
Yeah, now, just so you know, um, that these are very crafty people, and they're, they've got lawyers too. Uh, there was a, there was one project, it was, it was all on one owner's land, it was about a thousand acres. They actually, the energy company actually paid the native farmer to farm ten acres. No, they're doing.
Yeah, they are stealing.
Yeah, Dickerson Wright, go ahead.
They, those are rules on top of the NOLI law, they're just land value.
Yeah.
Rick, Dickerson Wright is, I think, representing the developer on this one, so.
Oh, the landowners?
No, the developer, or the, the company, I guess, so. This is the meeting we were at, Madison.
There's some good, there's some good lawyers that, uh, that practice solely on the landowner's side, um, there's that, I don't know what the name, can't remember the name, out of Delaware, Ohio. Uh, they've done a wonderful job for the landowners.
All right, well, we appreciate your time this morning.
Oh, well.
Not what we wanted to hear, but it's something, yes, it's something we needed to hear.
Yes, I'm sorry, I just don't have better news for you.
Yeah, that's okay.
That's just what the statute.
Yep, yeah, no, don't shoot the messenger.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, thanks for the call.
All right, we'll get to it.
I'm back. We made a demonstration last fall, and that was brought up in Madison, was before I got my session done, so. I knew some of that stuff, but I didn't know all the details of the background of how they're converting the ground to what they were doing, so we didn't get that far, so. So that's another, yeah, perk or whatever you wanna call.
Yeah.
I mean, that's what he says, legislators, they found a place that, you know.
It's another one of those things that has been in place for a long time, and now these new type of facilities are coming in that are exploiting it. That was never intended to be used that way, I'm sure.
But, yeah, any more questions, I'll get to him, or I could give you, you may have his email, you should have it at the top, I guess.
Yeah.
So that email that you got, so, just showing Madison County's paperwork, that's all it is. What she received, so, and she was in shock. Cause they were copying ahead of time and, you know, like we've done already.
Yeah.
And we had a meeting down there with Trump, so, so it's.
Well.
And Dickerson Wright didn't say a word, so.
Of course not. All right, well, thank you, Mike, for showing that up.
No problem.
Yes, thanks.
This is a copy of the small attachments that came for the joint board meeting, I emailed you the twenty-two page overview. I did not print that out for each of you, but that's just some things that we discussed. This, um, twenty twenty-three Ottawa River maintenance recap compressed, that's what I emailed you, it's just, it's got pictures of the map, so.
Can I ask what the, um, the Ottawa River? Is about the, I mean, it's a joint, it's a joint, um, to cater for the Ottawa River.
Several counties go together to maintain the water flow.
Right.
That's what this is.
This may be a silly question. Where's the Ottawa River?
Starts at Hog Creek in Liberty Township, flows west into Allen County. Why don't we, me and you gentlemen, to handle Hog Creek. That's four and four steps back.
So, the county just closes the county for its whole.
Yep, they're gonna use that to this whole fall.
Everything, everything part of this is pretty fine.
Yep.
So what's the issues there?
Yeah, anything that's filed with the high signing board is grandfathered.
That's one, two, three.
Plus you got the two down there.
Yeah, it's already.
I think they've already started their.
Paper. But that's already, that's already, it's just this new.
So we're gonna have to get, you know, we have to do this.
Clarification, get brass tax on that, cause I have no idea.
Well, it doesn't even sound like we give the opportunity. Madison County didn't have the opportunity.
They said we'll get whatever you're gonna name that.
So it starts at Hog Creek and moves west to Allen County?
Yeah, so it's this.
That we can't ban, that we can't ban, that it hadn't been approved yet, they can go this other route.
Which, yeah, as opposed to what we're.
Yep. So, don't lie to your face. I'm convinced they lie, right to your face.
No, it's what we experienced, which is why we demanded the information as most difference.
Yep. Well.
So they were gonna have you approve it and not tell you that they could choose which way to go? That's a, that's a tough. Yeah.
And that's what we're up against.
We don't see any issues here.
No, this, this is their routine report, not what they've, what they've removed so far, how much it's gonna cost to finish.
Yep.
They may need more money, but.
That's a typical story for you guys, Rick.
Yeah, who does, sir? Tony.
Can you step down, you may be here.
You should be on.
Being sure we are. I thought we had, had it on there.
Are these? You may subscribe to this.
That would be a dead question.
Oh, okay, I didn't know if it's something that I can look at, or, yeah.
County news?
Yeah.
They don't always sit out there too. Do you want your microphone on or off?
Well, muted, can, I'm muted.
They do not hear you at the moment.
Okay, yeah, we'll have to vote, so.
Yeah.
At some point, but.
Driving. I'm turning cameras on and microphone on them.
Okay.
Just so everybody knows. No audio access.
Yeah.
Look, they're looking at anything.
Is the microphone a Bluetooth?
It is, my mic's on, it's because I joined with no sound originally, so it makes me want to leave and rejoin.
The sensor Bluetooth's not connected, or was that connected?
No, it's plugged in, it's not Bluetooth.
Oh, I see, okay, thanks.
Okay, we're leaving for a second, guys. Just trying to. Still awake.
You don't have any sound either, why can't you hear them?
I don't know, volume's up, we're voting here. They're voting. We can raise a hand.
She can't hear it there.
I wish they would've used teams. Sorry, guys, I really don't know.
Everybody good?
Yeah, we're good.
Oh, did it land?
Okay.
Harding County, you there?
Yeah, we're there.
Yes, we're here.
Okay, so Harding County, Mr. Crow?
Absent.
Mr. Rush?
Present.
Mr. Striker?
Present.
Okay, so it looks like we do have a core, and we are good to go ahead. Um, I do have Jared Minar here from Coal and Water. He, um, has asked those meetings to be called, so I am going to attempt to share my screen here. And, um, I think you're gonna go over the signature first.
Yeah, correct.
So what we. Okay, can everyone see the slideshows up there?
Yes.
Five hundred and fifty.
Okay, and then this was also emailed to your forefitter this morning, so I don't know if you guys copy or copies to follow along as well, but we do have this up here, so. Um, I will turn it over to Jared, who, um, been to review for you.
Okay, so following our meeting last year, um, you asked for kind of a note of ego of what we did and to go over the different types of jams. Um, so I tried to go this together for you guys and go over it real quick, just go over what all was done last year for the maintenance. Yep, you go ahead. So here's kind of a breakdown of the signing for the As through the Ds, um, go ahead. And then if you have questions, feel free to chime in. This was the breakdown for last year. Um, I broke it down, there, it is different between the county and the cities since they did the checking. Um, but there was a total of thirty-six As, thirty-four Bs, six Cs, and two Bs. And then at the bottom right, you can see that Allen County total was forty-two thousand, we, and then Ploton County, it was six thousand, eight fifty-five. So we stayed about eight hundred dollars within that budget of, uh, hundred and forty-nine, ninety-nine ninety-nine. Is there any questions with that? Okay, go ahead. On this here is an example of an A ball. Just kind of, so. And then here's another A. Then B. C. And then, I'm just trying to get a map of where everything was, uh, pulled out of that, so you can just kind of flip through these if they don't have any question. And then the city here, covered the C and the C. And the B in the city. Another B here. And then this is just jumping back to the county. So is there any questions with the last year? Okay, um. How many I have a question for that. I mean, how many miles all together did this uh encompass of the of the waterway? Um. Twenty miles for the entire stretch of the county. Um, the only place that I was locked on was around three oh nine Glider area.
Hello, guys.
Do they have a chat?
Hello.
Oh, yeah, I got that thing. At the top, they write your people even.
Are we getting all sound?
Yeah. Maybe everybody's kind of.
Is there any comments on that?
All day is my audio for this meeting. Uh, could you tell if you're wanting to do a like a stop assessment? So is the fund fund well uh well funded at this point?
Yeah, so Jared has been explaining um that there is a cash balance currently that's under two hundred and forty one thousand five hundred and ninety seven dollars ninety one cent. Ninety five cents, sorry.
And the past that we've been able to each other that it costs home and it's now seventy five thousand, so that's why I need to be able to take that.
Okay, I don't think uh all day has any opposition to stopping assessments this time.
Okay. Uh, again, I don't have a resolution prepared for today, um so we just wanted to get everyone's thoughts on this point, because there's gonna be a couple of resolutions that we're gonna have to move to. Um, so we just wanna make sure that there wasn't gonna be any confirmation of that. Um, so um here's come Morgan. I have are you guys all good with um looking at?
They want to stop assessments.
Just continue with the assessments for right now?
Are you good at stopping assessments for right now?
As opposed to, I don't know, like we didn't hear whatever whatever they said.
Can you guys hear me? I'm making a video. Is someone on all ways county right now?
It's a lot of questions, please.
That was her answer when I said we couldn't hear. They're asking if it would be okay to stop assessments and the current balance of the fund is there on the chat screen.
Aren't they asking to stop because they don't have enough funds?
Anybody?
We can hear you now, but we missed the whole middle segment.
Okay, so what we're talking about right now is that Jared stated that the fund balance is over two hundred and forty one thousand dollars, so um they're only supposed to retain twenty percent of what the original amount of the pocket was, but we are act that out of actually. So um again, no resolution today, but we wanna make sure there's no confirmation on if we go to stop for the timing, 'cause we have a lot of stuff in the fund and the bid is threshold multiple thousand, so what might happen to um happening to bid recent years, so that was our assumption.
Well, I would be okay to stop, yes.
Okay, okay, and that's we just like that's what we wanted to add. We didn't want to try to move forward with maybe so many contracts on that, so we did agree with our office that that is okay, so all that here goes over this right now about the um future contract, I think we mentioned that stuff.
Yes.
Okay, and then we will plan another meeting to do all the resolutions depending on how you guys decide to do the contract, so I'll let him talk about that next.
Oh, so after talking with Brittany, Eric Kelly, they said that uh I gave an idea since we have not stayed under the bid threshold and using the same contract to reach out and just get the votes. Um, so I did that and it was kind of hard to find an idea. Um, after talking with Putnam County, uh Swallow Water, and you know, brought in this position when I first started, um I reached out to a couple and I got a note that they did not have a skitter um from everyone except for H and H Land Clearing. They're in the Cleveland area. Um, I did send that out, the numbers that they sent. And Tawa, obviously, that has been doing it in the past. Also, third concept said they don't have this time, but it may be something they wanna look at and make sure that um so maybe next year uh they'll have one as well. But when I ran the numbers, they came up very similar. There's only a difference. If you look at the H and H Land Clearing, the company has that just as the refilling of leaners, it does not have the leaners with chipping. Um, so as you're looking through the the regular class A, B, C, and D would be the county, and then the chipping is included in the city, um because there's nowhere to stash those and they have to haul them out. So I have an updated cost sheet where they have chipping of the leaners and that's one fifty. Um, so then I punched up the numbers using the what was pulled out last year, and there was only a difference of fifty dollars between the two contractors. Um, the big thing I saw is the mobilization for Tawa is five fifty versus five thousand for H and H. Um, so that could be a big thing. If they are moving in and out multiple times, then that would make H and H more expensive. So I just wanted to kind of see if you had questions on that, what your ideas would be between the two. Um. Or if you have questions on, I do have the sheet in front of me with the numbers that I found out.
Sounds like it's better to go over.
Yeah, that's what I think, especially so far this year. I hadn't got out to inventory the entire county, but some of the big areas where there was issues last year, it's definitely a lot less. Um, and that that could also be with more moving around and everything, where that mobilization might come in a little bit more.
Um, is everyone in favor of Jared moving forward to maybe requesting a contract for like for review and possibly passing a resolution at that point, or do you agree with that?
Yeah, good.
Okay.
That's fine.
Okay.
Yes.
Yeah, um, I guess.
Okay.
My question with that is one won't be a good time. Um, 'cause I know last year the city wanted the jams cleaned up before the board, and I know that's coming out pretty quick here.
Well, we're gonna have to have a contact with um your dealer first, and you'll have to create a contract. So we have to make sure that's okay, so um it's probably not gonna be difficult. Okay, so um. I mean, that meeting would be relatively good. I mean, I think we're looking at a and the next meeting would be a resolution to rescind the assessment for right now and also next week's new contract, so Jared will want it works. I'm giving a copy of our contract in the next few business days. I can send it out to you guys to review as long as everyone's good. You can any schedule a five to ten minute meeting in the next couple of weeks.
Hey.
Okay.
Sound good?
And then is everyone in favor of going to the local Tawa then?
Uh, yes.
Yeah, I would say yeah.
Arden County, yes.
Okay, thank you, guys. Um.
Yeah, and then so I know we're talking about the Ottawa, but the little Holland one, I don't know if I have it on my calendar.
Yeah, I would like, do you have a few minutes just to stay on and talk the whole Ottawa for just a few minutes?
Okay.
Okay, so Putnam, Hancock, and Parnet, we take you. Um, I think we are good and I will be in contact with you first once we do the contract.
There you go.
Hey.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Thanks.
Yeah. Have a good day. Yep.
That was still a call.
Now I know why I left the Teams app. I don't know what that was.
I don't know.
Nothing. Gentlemen, that's it for the day.
Alright.
Okay, thank you. We've got a female pneumonia, and I'll take care of that.
Okay.
Yeah, I can order some out.
And then the slideshow that they just went over was the twenty two pages that I said I did not print out for each of you individually and sent it to your email. The other things I gave you were the smaller attachments, so.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yes. Yeah, thank you.
Uh, is there a chance that you can send me that slideshow to my email? If possible?
Yep.
Okay.
Do you have a card?
Uh, I don't, but I can.
Tim, will you also?
Write down my email.
Yeah.
Hey, can you get like um your laptop?
It's on the. Just a print?
But at least, yeah, it's a print.
Just a print.
No longer in your study for great business parties.
Crazy, crazy kind of day.
Yeah, it gets that way sometimes.
Is that what you graduated high school?
Yeah. Uh, the case, uh, lower case.
Okay, I don't think it will matter.
It probably won't matter.
Gmail will fix it, I think.
Yeah, Gmail will probably fix that.
Okay, so.
Yeah. I mean, there's not really much to put down, but it'd be good to have the background information just in case.
Yeah, I'd say yeah, two hundred and forty pounds of background.
Yeah.
Yeah, they have some money.
It seemed like every question said something important. They cut out.
That's why I really like uh I feel like when you have the teams.
Good.
Do that anytime, use any other.
Well, the one guy at the car kept showing up in your line.
Also, why are you driving during the meeting, like?
How hard would you put this to Tory? Maybe she can remember the clock.
Oh, yeah.
Can't believe the summer's flying by already, word.
Make sure. So.
I have to play basketball, I have a ball in softball.
Oh, yeah, I just think it's okay. Yeah, I think that she waits till the last president's gone.
It's a good decision.
I mean, they.
Yep, that's.
See y'all.
See, they sign off. That's what we do usually.
Thank you.
I don't think there's anything.
Okay.
That might start a flood of others, but I think it's fair.
Yeah, but you're not gonna count down to school, right? Like, you want school?
Yeah, we start pretty much with the test, though.
Yeah, I'm saying they're there. Like, I get to count down and be like.
Oh, right, right, no, no. Just kind of, it's kind of normal. No, it's kind of worse, though, because when school starts, I have a lot more work to do.
Right, that's what I'm saying. And they're still there with you all. I mean, I have these like old trash in the house all day while I'm here, not eating everything in sight.